Like the call to order, special call meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. We have several items on our agenda this evening, ranging from reviewing the expenditure section of the budget line by line. The reason, one of the reasons we do this is to let the public know, as we do as a board, that we take time to review the information that's in this budget and to share with those who are interested, that might be listening, or refer to different media options where we're spending the money each year. Then we'll be doing a public hearing on the budget only, and then after that, there'll be a vote on the first reading of the FY '24 budget. The second reading will occur during our regular board meeting this coming Monday. Thank each of you for being here. This is probably one of the most exciting meetings that we have all year, so I appreciate you being here, and those who are watching, we appreciate you being on the air with us. So I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. We'll just do a show of hands, all those who approve. It will. But we don't have our laptops. Well, when I say "we," two do and three don't. Well, they might be here, but they're not open. Let's do this. All in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving into items for information, we'll move to the line-by-line review. Dr. Borchers, any comments before we start this?
Just that, you know, we had a few tweaks there that the board received updates on, but we have the presentation from last Monday available if we need that, but other than that, no, I think we're ready to jump into line by line.
Based on some earlier discussion the board had in reviewing this process, what I'm going to do is I'm going to identify each topic that we'll be looking at. We'll then identify the increase or the decrease of that particular topic. One of the items that is consistent pretty much throughout this budget is the area with the benefit section, which includes not only benefits, social security, retirement, life insurance, medical insurance, et cetera, et cetera. I'll do that once, and then after that, I won't do that section repeatedly, because I'll give you the totals, but I won't do the whole thing but one time. So, starting off, for those following us in your budget, we're on page 12. Account: Regular Instructional Program. This regular instructional program includes all expenses related to activities that provide Oak Ridge students with elementary and secondary learning experiences. Major elements in this series include salaries for teachers and teacher assistants, cost of instructional supplies and textbooks, and instructional equipment. Revenues for this section consist of local, county, and state government funds. This section of the budget is all supplemented with funds provided through local grants. Proposed budget is $21,722,875. This is an 8.12% increase from last year. And that section of the budget with teacher assignments, coaching assignments, goes through page 17. Are there any questions from the board on any of those items? Also on page 17, we identify the Career Ladder Program, which is a decrease of $4,000 or 5.71%. Homebound teachers, no increase or decrease there. Then the item of Educational Assistance is an increase of 18.28%. And you would remember in our discussion of the overview of the budget, this was one of the areas where we had a significant increase for teaching assistance. Any questions there? Moving to page 18 is the area I was referring to, which identifies certified substitute teachers, social security, state retirement, life insurance, medical insurance, dental insurance, employer Medicare, retirement, vision, and other contracted services. The percentages in all of those, one that might identify is the medical insurance, percentage of increase is 10.04%. The retirement, the hybrid stabilized, is an increase of 12.54%. Ms. Van Dyk, you want to explain what the hybrid stabilized means?
Absolutely. So, there are two different plans with TCRS now. There's the legacy plan, which teachers and non-certified staff who are hired before 2014 are a part of, and that is all budgeted in the 204 line where it says state retirement. Then there is the stabilization reserve trust, that is a percentage, I'm trying to wrap my head around how to explain, whenever, it's, the hybrid plan is for people hired after 2014. A portion of it goes to a trust to hold, to help offset future costs. We had to create this line, or the state did, because the federal government came back and said that federal grants can only be used to pay for current-year retirement expenses and cannot be used to fund that trust. So they have this line that we have to use for, to help offset that and to keep it separate for federal grants. I know it's clear as mud. It took us a while to wrap our heads around it, and we work with it every day.
Also, on this page, Instructional Supply Materials is an increase of 15.20%. And then the textbooks, electronic textbooks, is a large investment, which we have a large investment across the district, but that's an increase of 626.46%. Questions from the board? Ms. Agel.
Well, in dollar numbers, the increase in electronic textbooks is 258,704, but the next item is bound textbooks, and the decrease is 41,104. Can you explain why there's such a big increase in electronic without an offsetting decrease in the bound?
There are a couple of factors that play in here. One is that there was a delay in textbook, math textbook adoption last year, so we made no purchase of textbooks last year. So this year, we are purchasing math textbooks, CTE textbooks, and also some preschool curricular material as well. And we are able to use some existing ESAR funds to purchase some of the bound teacher materials that they've been able to sample and use ahead of time to lower that bound cost. But then the overall electronic cost is just representative of increasing textbook prices overall, and the fact that we have a whole new, across the board, K, pre-K-12 adoption happening this year.
Okay, moving to page, then to page 19, the textbooks, just identified that. Software is an increase of 1.02%. Other supplies and materials for the various schools, there is no increase or decrease there. Furniture and fixtures, there is a decrease of 15.44%. Then on page 20 is regular instruction equipment. Totals there, $30,639,530 is the proposed budget. That's an increase of $1,659,000, an increase of 6.61% across that entire regular instruction Moving on then to page 21, the Alternative Instruction Program. The Alternative School Program is an instructional program designated for students who have been suspended long-term or expelled, as well as those students who need a smaller setting and varied instructional strategies in order to be successful. This program includes activities that deal directly with the interaction between teachers and students in an alternative learning environment. Teachers assigned to that program is an increase, not in teachers, but in salary, of 5.38%. No increase on the Career Ladder Program. Secretaries for that program, an increase of 3.59%. Educational Assistance, an increase of 34.06%. Other salaries and wages, an increase of 4%. Certified substitute teachers, there is no increase or decrease. Regular instructional equipment, there is a decrease of 94.67%. And that line, are there any questions on the Alternative Instructional Program? Moving to page 20, did I just do double? Yep, yep, I did. Yep. So that was, we added some pages, and obviously I didn't take that page out, but added it in again, so I'm sorry for that. So, we move on to page 22. There is where you see the items that, I said I wouldn't go over every one of them, but you can see those there, the same insurance items, social security, et cetera. So the Alternative Instructional Program is an overall increase of 9.39%. Move to page 23. Special Education Program. Special Education Program includes services for students with identified special needs. Services are for students in pre-kindergarten through high school, including the intellectually disabled, physically handicapped, emotionally disturbed, learning disabled, and other special education categories. And once again, the revenues come from local, county, state, and federal IDA Part B funds. The teaching percentage increase is 5.37% in that program. Career Ladder Program, there's no increase or decrease. Homebound teachers, there's no increase or decrease. Educational Assistance for that program is an increase of 9.9%. Speech Pathologist is an increase of 3.39%. Other salaries and wages, no increase. Our insurance and substitute teacher page. And for Special Education Program, the budget is $5,288,964, an increase of $288,888 or 5.61%. Any questions in that category? Hearing none, we move on then to Career Technical Education Program. Technology Career Program includes learning experiences acquired through activities designed to prepare students to enter a career or pursue additional technology career training after high school. Major elements include the cost for teachers, teacher assistants, textbooks, instructional supplies, and instructional equipment. Revenues for this section come from local, county, and state. Additional funding for the program is accounted for under the federal Carl Perkins Vocational Act funds. Teaching line is an increase of 21.08%. Career Ladder Program, no increase or decrease. Educational Assistance, we're adding one there, so that's 100% increase. Substitute teachers, 4.17%, and then we have our lines for insurance, social security, et cetera. Instructional Supply Materials is a decrease of 60.72%. Staff Development is a new addition for both Robertsville and Jefferson in this category, so it's 100% increase. Other charges is a decrease of 3.16%. The vocational instructional equipment is a decrease of 77.50%. So the total for that line, the budgeted item, is $2,816,720, or a decrease of $114,816 Any questions on those pages?
I have one question.
Dr. Hartman.
The new teacher assistant, is that at the high school?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the decrease is because we have that Innovative Schools Model Grant, which is a state grant, so it got wrapped in here. We spent a lot this year, but it kind of inflated and skewed the numbers a little bit for next year, so.
On page 29, the instructional contingency is designated to fund instructional activities which cannot be immediately classified in one or the other instructional categories. Funding for this section consists of local, county, and state funds. The proposed budget is $1.166 million, and that is an increase of 625.19%. Dr., you want to take that, or?
You want to take it, Jennifer?
Jennifer?
Absolutely. So we budget contingency every year, that then, it allows us to kind of set money aside during the budget process for us to use throughout the year for local, like OREF grants or something that we have to set up budgets mid-year for, as well as just other unexpected expenses, surprises that we might need to do. So throughout that year, we'll start out with $1.166 million, provided the budget is past as presented. Throughout the year, we'll draw from that. So that's why last year we had, I can't remember where we started, at $915,000 last year, and what we're ending the year with is actually going to be less than what's showing here, $160,000. So it's kind of our savings pot that we set aside to help pull from throughout the year.
Dr. Williams, would you say that 99.9% of all of the grants that we get are designated for something? They're not open-ended where you, that we would say you have $100,000 and you can spend it wherever you want to?
That would be correct.
Okay, moving on, page 30. Health Services. Health Services include physical and mental health services which are not direct instruction. Included are activities that provide students with appropriate medical and nursing services. Revenues for this section consists of local, county, and state funds. Supervisor Director is an increase of 4%. Medical Personnel, which includes the nurse coordinator and nurse assignments at all of our schools, correct? Correct. There is an increase there of 12.25%. And then the section for retirement, social security, et cetera. There's our hybrid stabilized again. Travel, an increase, and this sounds like it's a lot, 11.11%, but it's really $150 increase, so you've got to look at both of those numbers. Other Contracted Services, which include interpreter services, is a decrease of 33.33%. Other Supplies and Materials is also a decrease of 36.93%. And Staff Development is an increase of $3,000 or 80%. Total for Health Services is $738,520, an increase of $55,060 or 8.06%. Moving on, Other Student Support. Services include activities designed to assess and improve the well-being of students and to assist them in reaching their potential and individual educational goals. Funds for this consists of local, county, and state funds. School Counseling is an increase of 3.48%. And then you have the section for overtime pays, and insurance, retirement, vision. Other Contracted Services include digitizing and electronic storage of student records, behavior specialists, EMT services for middle school football games, and consultants. Software is an increase of 6.76%. Other Supplies, an increase of 22.73%, which is actually a $5,000 increase, which will be working with promoting and supplying the Avid program with supplies and materials. Staff Development is a decrease. And Other Charges, which brings a total of $2 million, a budgeted total of $2,332,57 and increase of $284,890 or 16.29%. Questions there? Next item, Regular Instructional Support. This section includes expenses characterized as assisting instructional staff in planning, developing, and evaluating the process of providing learning experience for students. Major elements of this section include salaries for the executive directors, directors, supervisors, coordinators, librarians, cost for library books, in-service activities, and travel. Revenues consist of local, county, and state governments with some funds provided from grants and donations. Supervisor Director is an increase of 5.79%. Career Ladder Program is a decrease, $500 or 10%. Librarians is an increase of 6.5%. Instructional Computer Staff is an increase of 27.26%. Secretaries is an increase of 4.53%. Other salaries and wages is an increase of 67.70%. This is where you will see assignments for many of our, or most all of our PLC coaches. And then still within that account, In-Service Staffs is an increase of 34.27%, and this deals with a lot of curriculum and staff development projects. And then our Benefits section. Travel is no increase or decrease. Instructional Supplies, which within this section, we have coverage for unpaid lunch fees, unpaid student fees, and curriculum supplies and materials for each of our schools plus STEM program and some other areas. Library Books is an increase of 15.68%. Periodicals is an increase of 15.13%, but that's just $500. Software is an increase of 7.49%. Other Supplies and Materials is an increase of 7.05%. Staff Development is a decrease of 28.95%. That represents $57,230. And then we have, as you can see, other items that range from accreditation fees, Cognitive Coaching Institute, and other curriculum and development activities. So the Regular Instructional Support, the proposed budget is $4,204,198, an increase of $761,637 or 22.12%. Questions there? Ms. Agel.
Not a question, but a comment. The, once again, state law saying that school fees are requested but not required, costs us $85,000. That's a teacher and a TA. So, if anyone can pay the fees and just chooses not to, that's what it costs us.
Excellent point. Thank you. Okay, Special Education Support. Special Education Support activities include assisting the special education staff in providing appropriate learning experiences, primarily for students with special needs. Revenues for this section consists of local, county, and state funds. Supervisor Director is 4% increase. No increase or decrease in the Career Ladder Program. Psychological Personnel, an increase of 3.56%. Secretaries, an increase of 5.65%. Other salaries and wages, an increase of 4%. Your Benefits section, including travel, staff development, other supplies and materials, and Special Education Support, budget is $885,352, an increase of $73,800 or 9.09%. We're halfway through. Next item, Career and Technical Program Support. This section of the budget includes those expenses that are characterized as assisting the technology career instructional staff in planning- the technology career instructional staff in planning, developing, and evaluating the process of providing learning experience for students. Major elements include the salaries for the director and other staff, supplies, and materials. Revenues consist of local county and state funds. Supervisor Director is an increase of fifty-seven point four two percent. Secretaries, an increase of fifty-eight point five five percent. Our Benefits Section. Software is an increase of a hundred percent because we're setting aside ten thousand dollars for software. Other Supplies and Materials is a decrease of eight point one six percent. And the total budget is two hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, an increase of fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars or twenty-six point oh one percent. I'm sorry. Ms. Eggle?
Again, just a comment that a significant part of that is simply that the Supervisor Director and Secretary were previously split between two different budget codes, and now they're consolidated to this one. So that's where a large part of that increase is.
Thank you. Technology Services. These activities include information systems, staff, and data processing services. Supervisor Director is an increase of forty-nine point fifty-five percent. And we have the same issue there where there was, as Ms. Eggle just alluded to, where there's some combination of coming from other areas. Computer programmers, excuse me, a decrease of three point six four percent. Data Processing Personnel, an increase of six point six nine percent. Secretaries, a decrease of forty-three point five four percent. And our Benefits Section, Consultants, an increase of ten point five four percent. That's one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Data Processing Services, an increase of eleven point oh five percent. Internet Connectivity, an increase of thirty-three point six four percent. Data Processing Supplies, a decrease of twenty-six dollars or one point four six percent. Office Supplies, no change. Cabling, no change. Software, an increase of twenty-four point eight five percent. And this is fees, that particular section are annual fees for existing technology for the system-wide software maintenance base. Staff Development, an increase of two point seven seven percent. Data Processing Equipment, an increase of a hundred percent. Money there is for the data center upgrade, device repair, special needs and repairs, reoccurring experience expenses. And a lot of that is for device repair that we see in that section. So if we can be more careful with some of our student devices, that number would go down a little bit. Questions on that section? Okay. Then move to the next part of that is our Benefits Section and so forth. And the total for that is three million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars, an increase of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars or seventeen point two six percent. Next item, Communications. These activities include District Communication Support. District Director, an increase of sixteen point eight one percent. Again, there's some combining there in that section as well. Secretaries, a decrease of, did we move that position to another area, right? So we didn't lose it, we just moved it.
Correct. It got, that's where the Secretary or Administrative Assistant for the CTE program was split fifty-fifty, and so she's a hundred percent in CTE now instead of being partially in Communications.
Next was the Benefits Section and Staff Development. And then Total Communications Budget, Proposed Budget, two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, an increase of sixty-two thousand, eighteen dollars for an increase of forty point three nine percent. Moving on. The next section is the Board of Education. I always call this the Dan De Gregorio footnote. This is under the Board of Education, but this million-something dollars that's in this budget does not go anywhere to the five of us. So it's important that we make that clear, except the small stipend, which we do get, which is included in that. So in that includes benefits that are indicated, dues and membership, legal services. Always good to see when our legal services do not have an increase. It's always good to see. Other Contracted Services, and this would be our work through TSBA that we have, our liability insurance, premiums on corporate surety bonds, trustees commission, which is the one that I think continues to get most of us on this board, particularly Ms. Eggle, that we have to pay that amount of money, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, to the Anderson and Rome County Trustees Office. So, but I guess they would come back on that by saying, well, we're giving you tax money. I'm not sure how that balances out. Do that. Ms. Eggle?
Well, one, one thing that has always bothered me about the trustees commission, if you look at the total trustee commissions that they get from not only our school system but Anderson County Schools and Clinton City Schools and Rome County Schools, those commissions add up to more than the trustee's budget. So the overage just gets slurped back into the County General Fund.
Good point. Workers' Compensation, Insurance, and Staff Development for a total of one point one eight three, five hundred and seven dollars, an increase of forty-four thousand and fourteen dollars or three point eight six percent. Other Comments. Director of Schools. This section reflects activities performed by the superintendent of schools and assistants generally directing and managing all of the affairs of the school system. These include all personnel and materials in the office of the Chief School Executive. Never noticed that before. Why does that say county official administrative there?
That's the title of that with the State Chart of Accounts. All of these are the titles according to the State Chart of Accounts.
Curious. I don't know if I've ever noticed that before. An increase of five point eight four percent. No, no increase or decrease in the Career Ladder Program. Secretaries, an increase of five point six one percent. You see the Benefits Section. Postal Charges, no change. Office Supplies, no change. Staff Development, no change. Administrative Equipment, no change. Total of four hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars is the budget proposed, or an increase of twenty-eight thousand, thirty-three dollars, or an increase of seven point three six percent. Any questions there? Office of the Principal. This series of expenditure accounts includes the activities performed in supervising and managing all operations of this school. Major elements of the series include the salaries of the principals, assistant principals, school secretaries, travel, supplies, and materials. You can see the listing for the principals there. That's an increase of four point seven two percent. Career Ladder Program, an increase of five hundred dollars or thirty-three point, thirty-three percent. Why is that an increase? I, I thought there was...
That was one I would have to go back and actually look at. We guess on these, and we had pulled some mid-year out of there. So I think I just was kind of looking at what we had done in the past and trying to adjust based on that. But we had pulled a little bit mid-year, which is why our final budget was fifteen hundred dollars.
But it shouldn't be going up, should it? I mean, there is no career. When would it go up?
Only if, and I don't know if, if this happened, but if we had, for example, a teacher who took a job as a principal, but she had been a teacher at the time, that she was part of Career Ladder, then if promoted, it would follow into that category.
That makes sense.
Yeah, the overall Career Ladder decreased significantly, even in individual lines, it might adjust, yes.
That makes perfect sense. Accountants and Bookkeepers, an increase of five point eight one percent. Assistant Principals, an increase of eight point seven nine percent. Secretaries, an increase of five point eight three percent. You see the Benefits Section. The other, other supplies and materials for the various schools, staff development at our schools, administrative equipment is an increase. It looks like a lot, well, it's just twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, but that's a hundred and twenty-two point five eight percent based on what we'd spent before. So we're getting some new equipment in the various schools. So Proposed Budget is four million, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, an increase of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars or five point seven eight percent. Moving next to Fiscal Services. This section involves activities concerned with the fiscal operations of the Oak Ridge Schools. Includes budgeting, receiving, dispersing, financial and property, accounting, payroll, purchasing, inventory control, internal and external audit, and fund management. Supervisor Director, an increase of seven point oh five percent. Accountants and Bookkeepers, six point one eight percent. Purchasing Personnel, five point nine one percent. Secretaries, five point six eight percent. Other Salaries and Wages, twelve point one three percent. Overtime Pay, decrease of eighteen point seven oh percent. Benefits Section. Office Supplies, an increase of sixteen point three six percent. Staff Development, an increase of five thousand, five hundred dollars or fifty-seven point eight nine percent. Other Charges, an increase of one point three seven percent. Equipment, no change. Total Budget, Proposed Budget, one million, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars, an increase of eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars or eight point seven four percent. Human Resources Personnel Supervisor, excuse me. This budget areas include Human Resources and Personnel Support Services. Supervisor Director, an increase of five point nine percent, excuse, five point nine oh percent. Secretaries, increase of fifteen point three nine percent. Overtime Pay, no change. Other Salaries and Wages, an increase of point nine one percent. Benefits Section. Other Contracted Services, no change. Office Supplies, a decrease of five point four one percent. Software, an increase of seven point oh eight percent. Staff Development, a decrease of thirty-eight point seven eight percent. That's three thousand, eight hundred dollar decrease. Other Charges, a decrease of seventy-six point one nine percent or four thousand, eight hundred dollars. This is materials needed and expenses for recruitment program and retiree gifts. Administrative Equipment, an increase of two thousand dollars or two hundred percent. Total, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars, or an increase of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars or four point six eight percent. Operation of Plant. The activities in this section are concerned with keeping the physical plant clean and ready for daily use. Included are operation of heating, lighting, and ventilating systems, the repair and replacement of equipment facilities. Also included is the cost of building rental and property insurance. Supervisor Director, an increase of eight point four one percent. Secretaries, an increase of five point five four percent. Custodial Increase, ten point one five percent. This again is where we had some proposed salary increases for our custodial staff. Overtime Pay, no change. Benefits Section. Rentals, a decrease of two point four four percent. Disposal Fees, increase of nineteen point six four percent. Other Contracted Services, a decrease of nine point five eight percent. Custodial Supplies, an increase of five point seven one percent. Electricity, an increase of eight point nine four percent. That represents an increase of a hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. Fuel Oil, a decrease of three point one seven percent. Natural Gas, an increase of five percent. That represents ten thousand dollars. Water and Sewer, no change. And I, I specifically called that out because I think we're kind of doing a pretty good job right there maintaining what we do, particularly with in costs that we're, increased in costs that we're seeing in those areas. And again, I think that some of that is due to our work with ESG. Other Supplies and Materials, increase of two point two, or two point twenty-two percent. Boiler Insurance, seven percent. Building and Content Insurance, an increase of seven percent. Staff Development, no change. Plan Operation Equipment, a decrease of one point one four percent. Operation of Plant Budget, four million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, forty-two dollars, an increase of three hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars or six point seven six percent. Moving on to Maintenance of Plant. This section of the budget includes activities concerned with keeping the physical plant open, comfortable, and safe for use. Keeping the grounds, buildings, and equipment in effective working condition and state of repair. Funds for this section consists of local county and state funds with some grants for state and/or federal agencies. Supervisor Director, an increase of thirteen point two six percent. Secretaries, five point seven two percent. Maintenance Personnel, twelve point oh two percent. Overtime Pay, no change. Overtime pay, no change. Benefits section, maintenance repair, equipment, 3.3 percent increase. Maintenance repair vehicles, a decrease of 7.69 percent. Other contracted services, decrease of .35 percent. Equipment and machinery parts, a decrease of 2.01 percent. Gasoline, a decrease of 25.42 percent. That's amazing. General construction materials, a decrease of 6.90 percent. Software, an increase of 54.27 percent, which represents an increase of $12,136. Other supplies and materials, no change. Staff development, no change. Okay, I'll turn that over to you because that shows...
A very large percentage.
I can't hardly, I don't even know that percentage.
So, in the TISA funding, there were three state grants that were eliminated. One of them was the Safe Schools Grant, which used to be budgeted in Fund 145. It got moved into 141, so that $100,000 that you see budgeted there is for Safe Schools. So that explains the big change.
So the increase is $109,886.
Correct.
For that reason. So that would be 1,406.27 percent. Is that the way you read that? 1,000? 1,000? Yes, sorry, not 1 million, 1,000. So total budget for maintenance of plant is $2,374, an increase of $317,009 or 15.99 percent. Transportation. This series of accounts includes activities concerned with conveying students to and from school as provided by state and federal law. This includes trips between home and school, and trips to school and athletic activities. Contracts with private agency is an increase of 15.69 percent. Diesel fuel, no change. Software, an increase of $29,725 or 990.83 percent. Vehicle and equipment insurance, 6 percent increase. Transportation equipment, no change. Questions? Dr. Hartman?
Just curious what the Traversa software is. I assume it's tracking buses or something associated to that?
I'll answer on behalf of Mr. Lay, who was unable to be here today. Yes, so there was the $3,000 that we've been using, a lesser, robust, I guess, software system that they're replacing next year. The yearly increase will be about five times what we've been paying, so around $15,000 a year, but this first year, we have an implementation and training fee as well.
Okay. Early childhood education, provides educational services to pre-K children ages three and four. This account is offset by state pre-K grant revenue of $463,963. In addition, general fund, special education account codes, federal funding from Headstart, Title I, IDA, and IDA preschool grants also support the preschool program. Supervisor director, there is no change. Educational assistance, an increase of 12.56 percent. Benefits section, instructional supply materials, there's a decrease of $675, which would be 100 percent. Early childhood education, proposed budget, $488,166, an increase of $28,527 or 6.21 percent. Pre-K general fund, this account provides educational services to pre-K children ages three and four. Beginning in FY '18, this account series was established for general fund support of the preschool program. Additionally, general fund, pre-K grant, special education account codes, federal funding from Headstart, Title I, IDA, and IDA preschool grants also support the preschool program. Principals, an increase of 4.95 percent. Teachers, an increase of 40.26 percent. Medical personnel, an increase of 6.18 percent. Secretaries, an increase of 6.85 percent. Educational assistants, an increase of 12.66 percent. Custodial personnel, an increase of 16.15 percent. Overtime pay, no change. Other salaries and wages, an increase of 5.77 percent. Your benefit and travel section, other contracted services, which include Headstart monitoring, no change. Diesel fuel, no change. Instructional supply materials, no change. Proposed budget, $814,892, an increase of $65,610 or 8.76 percent. Questions?
Ms. McLean? Ms. Downard's salary is under the pre-K general fund, not the early childhood education supervisor director, right?
Some of it is, and some of it's in federal grants, so you won't see it in here because it's not general fund. Last year, we had, and I can't remember the reasoning for it, but the state pre-K grant picked up some of her salary last year because of, I think it was just the unprecedented grant fundings, and we were trying to spend that out. But generally, no, the pre-K grant does not pick up hers.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to regular capital outlay. This section includes site acquisition, site improvement, architecture, and engineering, educational specification, development, building, acquisition, and construction, and other capital-related services. Funds for these activities are from local, county, and state sources. Consultants is an increase of 197.81 percent or $33,211. This increase, I would suppose, deals with some of the consultant work that we're doing with planning for our future enrollment thoughts.
That's correct. We set some aside for work with the architects, basically, with Copin Associates.
Engineering services, no change. Other contracted services deal with the Innovative Schools Model Grant programs at both Jefferson, Oak Ridge High School, and Robertsville Middle School. Because we're having some grants there, there is a big decrease here of $328,630 or 45.10 percent. Debt service, this is money that's our annual payment for Phase One and Two of ESG, and payments made to the city as the funding for this went through the city's budget. There's no change there. Building improvements is a decrease of $376,649 or 28.80 percent. Site development, there's an increase of $5,000 or 11.11 percent. Proposed budget is $2,088,205. This is a decrease of $667,067 or 24.21 percent. Education principal on debt. This section includes principal on capital leases for schools' technology and computer labs. There is an increase of $34 or .50 percent. Budget is $6,843 or an increase of .50 percent. Questions? Ms. McLean?
So I want to see this robotic field painter in action. Can you tell us when it's working?
I'll send you an email. Okay. Education interest on debt, interest on capital leases is a decrease of $34 or 17.80 percent. Includes interest on capital leases for schools' technology and computer labs. Transfers out includes transactions with, which withdraw money from one fund and place it in another, and this particular one deals with district support of the Family Resource Center. We have an increase there of $42,970 or 54.05 percent. And that brings us to the end of details on the general purpose school fund for expenses. With that being said, we move next to a public hearing on this budget. And as within our public forums, within our regular meetings, anyone who wishes to address the board would come forward to the podium, and they may speak on things that would have been addressed in this budget that we've gone over or in the budget. And please identify who you are and give us your address, and then you would have three minutes to address the board, and we would go from there. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to first reading. So I would entertain a motion for approval of the FY '24 budget on first reading.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. McLean. Comments or questions? I've got just one comment, and an overall kind of comment, and Ms. Agel will remember this as well. For the last number of years, our budget, we've been able to show increases in many areas, from increases in salary ranges, the projects that we've been able to do, the items that we've been able to put in our teachers' and students' hands, have come with a budget that shows increase, a budget that shows that it has been picked over with a fine-toothed comb by staff, because I know there's a lot in here that staff has requested, and there's a lot that's not in here that we all would like to see take place. But it's so refreshing that we're able to come and do this, see the increases, see the things that we're able to do to improve the quality of education, know that when we go to the city to get this approved, it's not going to be an ordeal. Because we do remember times when we were doing this budget, that when we would go line by line item, unfortunately, there were many lines that were decreased. And we're in such a great position, and that comes for a lot of reasons. Not just from, certainly from the principals, but from the superintendent's office and his staff, the people out that are doing things to make this happen, that use this money wisely, and give us the fact that we have an opportunity, as we talked about in your presentation, we're able to take money from fund balance and use it, and have a reasonable, healthy budget in some, unless some catastrophe occurs, we're prepared. And I will tell you, we're very fortunate as a school district to be able to do this. There are a lot that are not, that are struggling, still struggling with this. We can, we can do better. We would like, I went back, and I'm not going to tell you what it was, but I got to thinking, when we added the $50,000 as a starting salary for teachers, I went back and pulled out my contract from my first year teaching in the Oak Ridge Schools in 1968. It would take me a number of years to reach $50,000 at that rate, I will assure you. So we've come a long way. So I'm proud of what our staff, we're thankful to each of you and those who are not here for what you do to make this happen, to give our teachers and our students the opportunities they have through this budget, and the time and effort that goes through this. Ms. Van Dyk, your staff, please convey our appreciation and thanks to them for what they do. This doesn't happen just overnight by any, any imagination there. So, much appreciation, excited to get this behind us, and we'll have the second reading on Monday. So, motion on the floor is approval of the FY '24 budget in first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Before we adjourn, with just a couple of reminders, convocation is this Thursday at seven o'clock. Commencement is, right, I get the, I don't, can we just call it graduation and a special meeting? Okay, Thursday in the Performing Arts Center, and then at seven, and then Friday at seven at Blankenship Field. And who did you appoint this year Dr. Borchus to be in charge of the weather?
Since he's not here, I think Drayton Hawkins is in charge this year.
I think that'd be a good responsibility for him, particularly since he's not here. We'll hope for good weather, cool weather, good, no, we don't want to be, you know, ask for too much, but good, cool weather. Lot of events going on in all the schools. One of the neat things that I think is really neat is when all the elementary schools invite the graduates to come back and do their walk and so forth at the schools. I know y'all are excited about doing that. That's what a fun thing to do. Just end of the school year activities, final test coming up, starting. Let's hope that we finish on a strong note, because we sure started on a strong note. It's been a great year of just unbelievable things happening. It's been a great year of just unbelievable things happening. It's just amazing. Again, I want to thank the elementary schools, and the middle schools, and the high schools for sending out their newsletters. That really keeps us up to date with things that are going on, things that are happening in the schools. We really greatly appreciate that. Again, thank you for all that you do. Thank you for being here tonight. I know we'll see you, most of you, again on Monday for a meeting, and hopefully, a lot of you at the high school activities. Any comments, Dr. Borcher's final?
You summarized it well, but just another shout-out for Ms. Van Dyke and her team. There is a lot of hours that go into this, so just really appreciate it.
And thank each of you, Scott and Dave back there. I hope you got us out to our millions of listeners. And Ms. Lemahurt, thank you for all that you do for us, and we stand adjourned.